So, good evening. I'd like to call this hearing to order. I want to thank everybody for being here. My name is Henry Garrido. I'm the Executive Director of DC 37 and the Co-Chair of the Commission along with Barbara Rice. I'd like to thank the College of Staten Island CSI President Timothy Lynch and the whole CUNY team for hosting us today. They do a magnificent job. I know that firsthand. The Commission, this Commission has been in panel to conduct a thorough review of the city charter and craft proposals that will be put before the voters. The Commission has an immense responsibility to ensure our municipal government is prepared to address the challenges facing working families today, tomorrow, and in the future. A prepared government means one that is transparent, one that is accountable to the people, and one that is robust. Balanced democracy, things that feel sorely lacking in 2025. This is our chance to create a better functioning city, one that is more transparent in its activities and more accountable to the people. It is an opportunity to make changes that will ensure that our city is less vulnerable to manipulation, corruption, or fraud. I know that all my colleagues take this responsibility very seriously. I look forward to working with everyone towards that common goal. While this Commission was convened via local law passed by the City Council, we are an independent body. It is our goal to hear from experts and everyday New Yorkers to propose substantial, effective amendments to the Charter. Any proposal, regardless of merits, that can be achieved by local law will likely not be up for our consideration. The Commission will not be considering any proposals that weaken local democracy or New Yorkers' rights. A note on the process, you may be aware that we are not only the only Commission task with reviewing the Charter. This Commission is a distinct entity from the Charter Revision Commission that has been convened by the Mayor. Both Commissions are working simultaneously but separately. For our part, this Commission will continue to hold hearings like this, like this one across the five boroughs, and issue reports to get public and expert feedback on our ideas over the next several months. Next, I'd like to ask the Commissioners or the members of the Commission to briefly introduce themselves, starting to my right. We, Commissioner Longley.
Hi. Good evening, Staten Island. My name is Serena Longley, and I am a Commissioner appointed by City Council Speaker Adrian Adams.
Good evening, Dr. Ramroju from Staten Island.
Hi, good evening, Navarro Lopez, appointee by Speaker Adrian Adams.
Hello, I'm Andrea Salwen-Copell of National Council of Jewish Women, also appointed by Speaker Adams.
Alan Swisher, the appointee of the Queens Borough President.
Thank you, and we have Commissioners online, starting with Commissioner Pastore. Manny.
Hi, I'm Manny Pastore, honored to have been appointed by the Speaker.
In no particular order, the other Commissions, would you introduce yourselves, please? Go ahead.
Hi, Mike Rasioco, appointed by Brooklyn Borough President Antonio Redo.
Joanne, you, appointed by Speaker Adams.
Thank you, everyone, and we are also able to be represented by General Counsel here. David, thank you for the support. We're going to start with hearing testimony, and first, we're going to call Dr. Mohammed Khalid and Jonathan Darcey from the CCRB. And me, before we begin, I just want to remind everyone that this is a formal governmental proceeding, that the Coran will be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. Video recording or photography is not allowed from the witness table. At tonight's hearing, we are going to ask folks to limit their testimony to three minutes in relation to strengthening local democracy and improving government transparency and accountability through the revision of the city charter. Commissioners are encouraged to ask questions based on testimony giving. Written testimony can be submitted to info@thecommission.nyc. I'll repeat that, info@thecommission.nyc, and can be of any length and welcome up to 72 hours after this hearing. So let me ask the first two witnesses to start, and please keep it within three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, Co-Chair and Commissioners. My name is Dr. Mohammed Khalid. I am the interim Chair of the Civilian Complaint Review Board, an independent agency that investigates and prosecutes complaint of misconduct filed by the civilian against the NYPD. I thank the Charter Revision Commission for the opportunity to address the proposed changes to the city charter to strengthen the police accountability. CCRB plays a vital role in New York City public safety ecosystem, but its effectiveness is hindered by current policy limitations and insufficient funding. To address these challenges, I am advocating for four critical reforms: increasing the CCRB budget to at least 1% of the NYPD total budget; granting direct access to the evidence in the NYPD possession; and providing the CCRB with final disciplinary authorities in case of police misconduct; and increasing the number of board members. The CCRB responsibility, CCRB is responsible for overseeing the latest, the largest police force in the United States with more than 36,000 uniformed members. As a national leader in civilian oversight, the CCRB is known for the rigor and scope of its investigation. In other cities such as Chicago and Miami, oversight entities have budgeted proportionally to the law enforcement departments they oversee. To align with these best practices, the CCRB should receive at least 1% of the NYPD budget. This significant increase in funding would enable the CCRB to operate at the level that New Yorkers deserve. Allocating at least 1% of the NYPD budget to the CCRB is an investment in both oversight and in public trust. Direct access to body-worn camera footage and other relevant investigative material is essential to ensuring thorough and independent oversight. Allowing investigators to review footage and document without delay in compliance with the federal and state law would prevent holdups that obstruct timely justice for both civilian and officers. Even though the NYPD has made great strides in providing timely access to evidence, especially body-worn camera footage, direct access to the evidence should increase public confidence in the independence and fairness of CCRB investigation. Empowering the CCRB with final disciplinary authority is crucial for establishing truly independent oversight. Currently, the Police Commissioner has the sole authority to modify or reject the board disciplinary recommendation. This policy erodes public confidence in the accountability process. Granting the board a final disciplinary authority would send a strong message that New York City is committed to robust and independent civilian oversight. Finally, expanding the board would enhance the capacity to evaluate cases efficiently and reduce the current backlog. More members would bring a wider range of expertise and ensure that cases are considered from diverse perspective. This expansion would not only accelerate the process but also improve the quality of oversight, ultimately building great public trust and ensuring accountability. Each of these reforms, securing at least 1% of NYPD budget, granting direct access to evidence in NYPD possession, give the CCRB the final disciplinary authority. And expanding the board is vital to creating a system of accountability that meets the needs of New Yorkers. CCRB cannot fulfill its mission without the necessary resources, authority, and independence to hold the NYPD accountable. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any question you may have. And also, along with me is our Executive Director Jonathan Darsh.
Thank you, Dr. Khalid. Before we move on to some of the questions, let me acknowledge that we've been joined by Commissioner Jones. Commissioner, would you like to say a few words? Good, okay. Thank you so much. All right, so we're going to have some questions. I'd like to start with one about something you testified regarding the expansion of the board. The current structure of the board is appointed by the Council, the Mayor, the Public Advocate. You did not specify how many new seats you are suggesting the board gets expanded by, and who would have the authority to appoint those additional seats.
We have, right now, 11 seats. We're still missing four seats. Five seats are appointed by the City Council, five by the Mayor, three Police Commissioners appointee, and one Public Advocate, and the Chair is appointed both by the Mayor and by the City Council Speaker. So the total is 15.
And your suggestion is to increase it to what?
My suggestion is that, right now, we have a seat open in Bronx. The City Council seat is open in Bronx. There are two, one police representative has just resigned, and we got one Mayor appointee two weeks ago, and we still have two more seats from the Mayor, and one seat, I'm the interim Chair, and currently, I'm occupying two seats, a member from the Staten Island also, and also interim Chair. So there are total four seats which are still vacant.
So, okay.
If I could expand on that a little bit.
Just take your name for the record, please.
My name's John Darsh, and I'm the Executive Director of the CCRB. So while Dr. Khalid is correct that we do have four vacancies on the board right now, and that is currently impacting our operations, even if we had all 15 board members, it would still be not enough capacity for us to do the work that the board does, which is reviewing individual cases in a timely manner, especially considering the new areas of jurisdiction that have been added to the CCRB, especially racial profiling, bias-based policing, and also considering the increased number of complaints we've received in the last two years. And in 2024, we received 5,600 complaints within our jurisdiction.
Yeah, so I just want to clarify, you're not asking for fulfilling already existing positions that are there, but an additional number of positions? And what I fail to understand is how adding new positions will speed up cases?
Because right now, when, right now, our process is that staff investigators review the evidence and prepare closing reports that go to the board where there are recommendations made to the board about how to resolve cases. But it is the board that reviews those reports and reviews the underlying evidence that makes the determination that the CCRB signs off on. And so, without having enough board members, because the board members generally review complaints in panels of three.
And those panels are basically, one from the Police Commissioner, represented, one from the Mayor, and from the City Council. So when the cases come to a panel, they're the one, they read it after closing reports, and then they vote on it to make sure that it's properly read and the decision is properly made. So it's ultimately the board members that they make the decision. And so, right now, it is affecting, as last year, because of the lack of funds, lack of personnel, we had to close 1,500 cases.
So there were approximately 1,500 cases that, complaints that we closed without any investigation at all because of a lack of resources. But that's, that's a separate issue from the backlog that exists because there aren't enough board members. But there is a, there is, one of the reasons why we are here today is to ask for a change to the Charter that would tie the CCRB's budget to the NYPD's total budget rather than the current system, which ties our headcount to the NYPD's uniformed headcount.
Yeah, so I want to ask you a question about that, because in the 2019 Charter Revision Commission, one of the recommendations was the minimum budget to be established for CCRB. How is that being implemented? Are you getting the resources pursuant to that 2019 Charter Revision Amendment? And what is the current interaction with that budget pursuant to the 2019 recommendation of the Charter at the time?
We had 0.65 at that time, then it increased to 0.7. And now, we are asking at least 1% of the budget of the NYPD, which is 6.1 billion. So we are only asking for 1%, and that will be overseeing 34,000. And if the budget is approved as 1%, hopefully, we will be having one investigator for 128 NYPD members. So we certainly, lack of budget is really affecting the public trust, and so I would say that this Charter should really give us the opportunity to have a 1% at least the budget, so we can continue doing the work the city people in City of New York needs.
So what you're asking is the current increase of 0.70 to go to 1%, correct?
So, right now, the way the Charter is written, our headcount is tied to the NYPD's uniformed headcount. But that doesn't account for the historic underfunding of the CCRB, and it doesn't account for salaries that are set by collective bargaining, or the fact that people might not be all Level 1 investigators, and that there are senior people at the agency who make more than the lowest-paid investigator. And so, our headcount is set as a percentage of the NYPD's headcount, our minimum headcount, which would be approximately 233 people. Right now, our headcount is, is projected in the next fiscal year to be 247 people, which is above the 0.67% of the NYPD's projected uniform headcount, but it is insufficient for our needs. We are requesting an additional 150 people, which would be a total of 397 people, which is far in excess of the 233. That's the current floor set by the Charter. And so, we think that having a dollar amount is more effective than having our headcount tied to the NYPD's headcount.
So what is the dollar amount nexus, the delta between the 1%, which in my math looks like 610 million, from what you're actually getting now?
Right now, with 1% of the NYPD budget, we are asking about $61 million.
So, so.
I'm sorry, 61 million?
61 million, not 610.
Sorry.
61 million, yeah.
And, and the delta between that and what we are, what we currently requested is $17 million. The, the current proposed budget that is for $27.8 million, so that delta is, my math isn't up to that, it's approximately like 32 million?
All right, any questions? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you for the testimony. I would like to ask you a question about the imposition of discipline. You're proposing that the CCRB have the final say on discipline. For your budget proposal, you listed Chicago and Miami as comparators for purposes of the 1% budget. Do you have any comparators to provide with respect to this proposal of an independent agency that would be, that imposes, has the final say in disciplined decisions for a police force?
Well, I think the agency, also Detroit, Michigan, I think the, the agency was created in 1950, but they were all, at that time, they were all police people involved in that. Mayor Dinkins, he established 30 years ago, a real CCRB, which was civilian, all the civilian, except few people from the Police Department. So we do all the investigation, all the resources are spent on, and we find that a certain percentage of, not every NYPD personnel is bad, but there are people that they commit misconduct. So we investigate, we send it to the Police Department. So I think the CCRB, if it's created for that purpose, to look into the misconduct of the police, then we should have the authority. We should have the authority.
I'm just asking if you're, if other cities, if there are any comparable cities that have the model that you're proposing?
Yeah, Detroit has.
Detroit does, okay. And have you studied how it's working in Detroit?
You have that on.
So my interaction with the members on the Detroit Police Board is that it's an effective system of oversight, but I don't have any details for you about how effective it is.
Okay, before we go forward with further questions, I want to acknowledge that we've been joined by Commissioner Winston Griffith. Welcome. All right, any other questions, Dr. Raju?
Thank you, Dr. Khalid, for a thoughtful testimony, and I kind of like your recommendations very much, but except one area, I need a little clarification. If the CCRB has got the final authority on all decisions, in other words, you want to take it away from the Commissioner, and the final authority rests with CCRB, can't there be a little bit of give and take? Because any agency head cannot just hand over the absolute power of firing anybody to another outside agency. So that would be very, very difficult. Would it be a better via media in between that CCRB Mayor, sorry, Commissioner can go back to CCRB and say, "Look, you need to really take a look at it," or a combined decision-making, or something different than that? Because the idea of CCRB and the Commissioner is, the premise is that both the Commissioner and the CCRB want good contact by police, right? That's, that's what it is. I don't think, this is not an adversarial idea, it should not be, at least in paper, that both the Commissioner as well as the CCRB really wants good contact by the police officers in the interest of the public. But taking away the final authority from an agency head, then the same thing will happen with other areas, you know? Then the Commissioner of Health cannot fire anybody, then the Commissioner of Health and Hospitals cannot do anything, or Fire Commissioner cannot do anything. So it'll be like a chaotic administrative structure. So is there a proposal that you can kind of live with, that you have some kind of power sharing at that point?
Well, I think that we have a very professional and cogent relationship with the Police Department. It's not the idea that we're taking away anything from the Police Commissioner's authority, but in certain cases, when CCRB and the Trial Commissioner has okayed a case, that still goes for the punishment, but it still goes to the Police Commissioner and to the Mayor for their final authority. Those are certain cases that we, you know, we are looking at, that we have trial for the NYPD, the trial was done by our APU unit, which is a prosecution unit in the CCRB. We had a memorandum of understanding with the Police Department previously, and that memorandum was that we changed certain things that they said they will provide us the camera footage, and we have to get from them. But if, if that's granted to us, so we can directly go there and get the camera instead of footage, I think that is also, we are asking for, right now, we get from the Police Department, but giving us the authority to have that directly, I think it will save our time as well, and.
Now, I support that. I just supported the, only the third one you had, that, that the police, you take away the sole responsibility, the Police Commissioner to the CCRB. I just want to really rethink that a little bit better. So we have some kind of shared responsibility as opposed to just giving it away and giving it to another civilian body.
Dr. Klee, can I?
Yes, go ahead, please.
So to take the second half of your question first, Dr. Raju, there is a process by which the NYPD can ask the CCRB to reconsider its decisions. And so that is, that is already in effect. It is in the CCRB's rules right now. It's called the reconsideration process, and it is something that we engage with. We also get reopen requests from civilians and members of service alike. So the CCRB is not perfect, and we, we are open to feedback about our decisions. And the second point I wanted to make is that this would not remove the power of the Police Commissioner to discipline members of service. She would still be able to take, to use her authority as Police Commissioner to discipline members of service independent of the CCRB. This is only in the limited scope of when CCRB is, has made a determination, the rest of the discipline process should remain with the CCRB.
Yeah, I have a, I have a question. I'm clear in your testimony that the Police Commissioner has the sole authority to modify or reject the board's disciplinary recommendations, and why that's of concern to you. Can, can, can we get a scope, a sense of the scope of that? How often, say, last year or in some given time period, what percentage of the time has the Police Commissioner either modified or rejected the board's disciplinary recommendations?
Well, in the past, Commissioner, there was at least 500 cases, that we sent 500 cases, they were not even looked at, they were just thrown out.
500 out of how many, or total?
So the, the.
Because that, I have no sense of the scope of this, so.
In 2024, so, really, the vast majority of this is before the current Police Commissioner was in, was in.
That's fair.
Police Commissioner, there were 1,728 members of service with substantiated complaints. Of the complaints that were closed by the Administrative Prosecution Unit. Uh, of the complaints that were closed by the Administrative Prosecution Unit, which handles uh which handles the most serious disciplinary matters that we find where we're recommending the member of service receive charges and specifications. There were a hundred and sixty one members of service who were found guilty, which is a discipline rate of seventy three percent. And then the discipline rate for non-APU cases, which are just handled internally by the Police Department, where the board has recommended that a member of service face uh lesser discipline, whether it's a command discipline that could have a penalty of up to forfeiture of ten vacation days or training. Uh, the discipline rate for non-APU cases was twenty seven percent. The Police Commissioner recently announced the end of a policy by which the department was uh refusing to review non-APU cases that they received closer to sixty business days to the S, uh, to the statute of limitations, which is eighteen months from the day of the incident. If you exclude the cases that were closed in that manner, the discipline rate for the non-APU cases was ninety three percent. But there was a significant number, I, I think Dr. Khalid was correct when he said there were five hundred cases approximately that were closed last year by the NYPD without any review based on how close to the statute of limitations the complaint was when it went to the department. That's one of the reasons why we're asking for more funding to, so that we can close our investigations quicker without losing any uh quality. And it's one of the reasons why we're asking for more board members so that once our investigations are complete, the review of the complaints can be done in a quick way, but still allow for a full review.
I realize there are so many different categories here and I'm sure that's really good distinctions that you're making. But I, I still don't feel like I have any sense at all of how often the Police Commissioner is overriding the CCRB's disciplinary recommendations.
We, 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 we don't know about that. Uh, I'm sure John will be able to.
We'll get you an exact number.
Okay, that'd be great. That's, yes, that's fine. If you can do it right here, I totally understand.
I think there are a lot of numbers being thrown out. If you could give us those, I think we would appreciate it. But, but there's one thing that, that, that I find troubling with your recommendation. And forgive me, but I have another hat as a union person, which is the city charter is also subject to state law. The law that handles uh labor law essentially the Taylor law, which defines very clearly what preemption is. Given the fact that you're not the employer, but the Police Department is the employer. If you have the authority to terminate an employee or the sole authority uh to Dr. Raju's point, rather than the commission in a shared capacity, wouldn't you be violating the precepts of preemption under the state law because you're not the employer and you'd be exercising on the collective bargaining agreement, which police officers are covered by uh an action to discipline an employee without the employer's recommendation or execution while you are not the employer to begin with? Do you understand what I'm getting at?
I, I do. Do you mind if I answer this, Dr. Khalid?
Yes, go ahead. Sure, John.
So the, the interaction of the police disciplinary process with the Taylor Act is very complicated. Because right now, the police disciplinary process is exempt from the Taylor process because it's grant. It is, it is uh because the charter provisions that covered it came before the enactment of the Taylor Act. And so, if we were to change the charter, that may change. And so, I, I'll be blunt, sir. I was not aware of the preemption issue and so you may be correct. But, Dr. Khalid's here and I'm here testifying about what we think would be best for the city. If it's not possible, if you and, and the council and the commission determine that it's not workable, we understand that. But we're here saying that there is a, that we think there's a need for a change.
The implications of what you're asking are, are very severe. Because if what you're saying is true and your portion preempts or was done prior to the law, the Taylor law being enacted, then that means police officers could go on strike by your actions. And given the fact that you're not the employer, the consequences of that could, could be incredible, right? And so I'm just, I'm, I'm in my world, so forgive me, everybody, but this is one of those things. I understand the other four proposals. I mean, the other three proposals out of, this is one that I find legally challenging. We're going to defer to our General Counsel to give us some advice on this issue.
A hundred percent.
But I, I understand the fact that if the intent is that you're making recommendations and the Police Commissioner is either ignoring it or not acting upon, which is what I'm hearing. Because it's coming at a certain amount of days prior to the expiration of the statute of limitation, one. And you don't have the resources. So this sort of sounds like a vicious cycle, right? You don't have the resources, you can't complete the cases, you complete the cases, they're within sixty days of the statute of limitation. They can act on it and it's almost like a default uh bypass over the intent of the review of the work that you have done, right? Am I, am I off on this?
Yeah, you, just one, sorry, Dr. Klee, no, you're the boss.
I applaud the Police Commissioner. Uh, she just stated that she was going to not take, the day, the time was taken before. She's going to change that. I really have no problem by saying that, that she should not have the authority. But I think the process, what we are doing is as an independent agency, some of the work which is, has a lot of work put in by the investigators, by the lawyers, by the uh agencies uh work, uh pe, working people. If we have a total opposite disciplinary than what we recommended, then the CCRB purpose fails. Because we call it as a, you know, civilian complaint review board. So if we do not provide the exact discipline to the NYPD, what the police, what the public is, is entitled to, then, then I think that the, our purpose should, is not solving what we are looking for, for the trust of the public.
Yes, I understand the intent. Uh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Lopez?
Sure, and uh, thank you both for coming today and testifying. Um, a lot of my questions got answered. So, my one remaining question is just, I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about uh the collaboration interplay between the CCRB and the Office of the NYPD Inspector General. Is there a lot of collaboration between your offices? Is there anything that this commission should be doing to look at how we can better improve uh the communication and collaboration between both offices? Thank you.
So, so there, there is collaboration between NYPD OIG and the CCRB in a on a case by case basis. We really do very different things. They undertake investigations into uh big policy areas and we deal with individual complaints and individual incidents to determine whether misconduct happens. So there are times where NYPD OIG reviews CCRB materials and and they will come ask us questions based on work that they are doing. And there was one incident in the past where an advocacy group made a complaint to us based on information in an NYPD OIG report. But we generally do not investigate, we, we're not being referred complaints by NYPD OIG. If, if we are, I'm not aware. May, maybe there've been a hand.
Thank you.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Co-Chair. Um, I, I just wanted to echo uh what the other commissioners said about the importance of providing us the data with respect to instances where the Commissioner's disciplinary decision diverges from the recommendation of the CCRB. Uh, I do share some of the legal concerns that Co-Chair Credo uh has raised, but at the same time, I'm struck by uh some of the numbers presented here. So I, I think that would be very helpful if you could uh provide that to the commission so we could consider it moving forward to see if there's a way that we could address this. Um, my question goes back to uh your proposal to expand the board. Um, so as you testified, there are uh allotted fifteen members of the commission. Uh, disciplinary cases are reviewed by panels of three that are then ratified by the full board. Um, obviously acknowledging that you only have eleven members uh right now. Uh, do you have data concerning the number of, of cases that the board uh reviews annually? So we have a better sense of, of uh how taxing it is on you and, and what number might make sense uh if we were to consider expanding the board?
So in, in twenty twenty three, the board reviewed two thousand five hundred eighty cases and in twenty twenty four, two thousand five hundred and fifty one. I said cases, I apologize. Two thousand five hundred eighty fully investigated complaints and in twenty twenty four, two thousand five hundred and fifty one complaints.
Okay, okay, cause I am struck by the, the comparison of the size of the board versus uh, you said, I think thirty four thousand uh uniform members. I, I, I think anyone uh who knows uh kindergarten math knows that that number seems insufficient. Uh, but I, I think precision would be very helpful for our task. Um, thank you.
We have a backlog for at least a, almost close to a year now of the lack of the board members making the decision three, three people as a panel.
Understood. Thank you.
Great, yep.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Apologies for being late. Um, I wanted to just follow up on that question and around the conversation around the expansion of, of the board. Um, and specifically the uh tying the participation on the board with, with this notion of independence of the board. And speci, specifically around uh removal of, of members. Um, so I, I, I have some sort of threshold questions and then questions that go beyond that. And the threshold question is, to what extent have we seen removals of board members that have interrupted their, their three-year terms? And in your opinion, has it ever undermined the independence of, of CCRB? And uh, I know that there are supposedly protections, um, but that they are not, that they're somewhat vague and, and not spelled out. So to what extent do you feel like there need to be more explicit protections? And to what extent do you feel like those protections are needed, uh, the explicit protections are needed for the independence of the board?
I served previously from two oh five to two fourteen, nine years under Mayor Bloomberg. And I didn't see any case at that time that a board member was removed. There was certain things that uh a chair was not doing what the board was looking at collectively. So there were some issues at that time. But currently, I, I'm just there six month right now, first as a board member, then as an interim chair. Uh, we don't see anybody that who has resigned uh resigned on the basis of their uh other needs that they have to do. Uh, but nothing removal of a board member by all of us in not doing their job or anything of that nature.
You've never seen anyone get pushed, pushed out?
No, nobody was pushed out. They, if they leave, lately we had a police representative, she had an issue of uh, you know.
It was a personal issue.
Yeah, so it was nothing to do with CCRB. And so, uh, I think all the board members, which I have seen in six months now and previously, everybody is really trying to do the best for the city of New York and, and I, I really appreciate the board members that they are working very hard uh to make sure that the civilians uh oversight is done impartially, properly and, and uh done with their best ability.
So you don't see that as an, that's not an area of concern at all for, for you?
No.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Jones.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm just trying to follow up on the, on the set of questions, just in terms of rather than going away with a, a kind of broad set of questions. I want to just kind of pencil down on clarity. So, when I started doing the back of the envelope math, it sounded more like there were about um a couple hundred cases per cluster of three. And then spreading in my mind over fifty two weeks, that comes to about ten, ten to a hundred cases somewhere they're in on a weekly basis. But I can't seem to map the math. And so if, if you can kind of go back and do the math so that we can kind of get a run of what that workload is on a regular basis. Because I'm trying to map then the ask for additional dollars as opposed to additional headcount. So I'm, I'm trying to map it. And so if you can sharpen a pencil on what does that mean? If you take the twenty five hundred cases and divide those over, you know, three, you're somewhere around eight hundred. And then if you break that down over fifty two weeks, it comes down to a much smaller number. But I can't seem to track what that workload looks like for the collective group. So when we're talking about more money versus more people, I, I can't bridge the two of those, if that makes sense. And then the other one thing I'll say is, I think um to the co-chair's point, do you have a recommendation for a bridge between um what you recommend, some reconciliation process between what you recommend and what the department as the employer recommends? And that, you know, we often see the same thing. If we have people in the community who feel like one of our employees wronged them, they want them terminated, right? And that they're not the employer, we're a buyer. So is there some way to reconcile between the department and the board's view on what should happen? Rather than it being all out?
Go ahead, Dr. Klee.
Mr. Jones, if I could take the second part first. The CCRB uses the NYPD's own disciplinary matrix when we make our discipline recommendations. So, the I think that is the best way to bridge differences between the CCRB and the NYPD on the discipline, on the nature of the discipline that should be imposed on a member of service for uh for misconduct that the board has substantiated. With regard to the, the, trying to connect the, the dollars and then the board caseload, they're really not directly related. Because the dollars and the headcount really go for this professional staff of which I'm, I'm one. And our, our work uh doesn't just deal with the two thousand five hundred and fifty one cases that we're able to fully investigate. It also deals with the larger universe of five thousand six hundred complaints that we've now, that, that seems to be the level we've stabilized at over the last two years that we're getting uh and that we have to process those complaints as well. The we closed fifteen hundred complaints last year without any investigation. Because we had to make decisions about where to allocate our resources so that we could investigate cases in a timely way. The the complaints that were reviewed by the board, that number would go way up if we had the funding that would allow us to have the staff that would complete more investigations that would then be reviewed by the board. We tend to have between three and four panels of three board members meet every month. Sometimes scheduling will push one panel off into the, so sometimes you'll have two panels one month and, and five panels in the following month. But generally speaking, we try and have four panels a month. Each panel reviewing between fifty and a hundred cases. I think complaints is a better uh term to use. I think complaints is a better term to use.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, only had a question.
Yeah, thank you. I just, a lot of this, this has been said, but I want to share in what many of my colleagues have expressed about concerns about completely removing the disciplinary, final disciplinary say from the NYPD and giving it to the CCRB. And I would just, I would be very interested in hearing more sort of creative ideas that you might have to empower the CCRB more and have your recommendations have more of an impact that don't go as far as fully stripping an agency of its, you know, employee, like employer, employee relationship with, with the members of the NYPD.
So I just think that Mr. Garrido is probably more qualified than, than I am certainly about what you could do that would not take away the police commissioner's role as the final arbiter of discipline without then exposing the, the problems with the Taylor Act.
Well, I, I just. Yeah, but I'm interested. So I'd love to hear from him, but I would love to hear from CCRB about what you think would be a good idea from your perspective as well. So I wouldn't just, just give it to the commissioner. So I just encourage, you know, you can follow up with us. And, and as many others have also expressed, I think a lot of if we could have more data and more visualization of sort of the workflow, you're describing all of these things, the scope. It would help us, I think, really understand the, where the, where the problems are and where you're sort of losing the impact that I think the city would like you to have and that you're intended to have.
I wish, yeah.
Thank you. I have another question related to, to impact beyond, and this is more philosophical and forgive me if I don't know the answer already. You know, part of the impact you can have is actually disciplining officers who commit misconduct based on your findings. But it occurs to me that another, you know, really significant impact that the CCRB can have is around transparency and sort of sharing information with the public. So I don't know much about, you know, are there limitations on what the CCRB can share? When it has a finding, when it recommends a disciplinary action? Whether or not that action is adopted or rejected by the commissioner? If we could talk about like publicity and publicity is a bad word, but it's not the right word. Transparency and sort of communication that you're able to do, because I think that's another area where you really are able to have an impact. And is that limited in any way? Are you satisfied with information you're able to share with the public about your work?
The, the police commissioner, I mean, currently, we appreciate the fact that when we send a, our decision, send it to this, the police commissioner, the police commissioner has made a decision that they, they give us a reason, which is really great, that why they are not going with our recommendation. So that's another thing, which is a good thing by the police department, by the police commissioner, giving us that this is the reason we cannot go with your recommendation. So we appreciate that. I certainly want to repeat this thing that CCRB is not looking. We have come a long way. I would say that in the, in the past, which I served and now I served, there's a lot of things have changed, give and take, memorandum of understanding between CCRB and between the police commissioner or the police department. There are a lot of changes has taken place. But I guess that probably a time will come that if we are looking at independent oversight agency and we do all the investigation, everything is, and we communicate with the NYPD. It's not that we just, you know, they come in, they tell us, we look at the BWC and, and that's where the decisions are made. Audio, video are all seen and then we look at it. So we appreciate the fact that Chairman, I'm not looking for to take away the commissioner authority, but there are certain things that the CCRB needs to, to be independent on that, yeah.
Yeah, I understand that. I think there's a practical problem here, not just a law. If you make a recommendation of terminating an officer and you have the sole authority to do that and the union files a grievance to restore that officer's, to have a hearing pursuant to the due process right. And that happens. And the commissioner now has to represent the agency on your recommendation. But the commissioner then says, well, we, I wouldn't have done this this way. An arbitrator would restore that officer in a minute. Because you're not the employer. You don't see what I'm saying? This is a, this is a, just a logical without going into the complexities of the Taylor Law and everything else. And this happens not just with you, it happens with many agencies that have independent IG offices, like NCHA and all the way, would make recommendations and then it's the same thing, right? Which is why I think it's intriguing what Commissioner Longley said. Is there a creative way to strike a balance between that and not having the commissioner just ignore or make sole recommendations? That's what we're trying to get at, I think. Because if you make recommendations and they're ignored, obviously that's not good. That, that erodes the confidence in the public and, and the accountability of the office and defeats the purpose by which you were created in the first place. But you also understand the other side, right? That if you do make that recommendation and the agency doesn't believe that, they would have to defend a case, you'll probably lose that case immediately. In a court of law, in an arbitration proceeding, in an, in a mediation proceeding. And that's kind of what the problem I see.
So I, I'm not going to disagree with, with Mr. Garrido about labor law. My, my, my time at the Industrial Labor Relations School at Cornell was, was not glorious enough for me to presume. So I'm going to, I'm going to not go there. But if I could answer some of Commissioner Capel's questions, if that's okay? So in 2020, New York State repealed Civil Rights Law 50A, which prevent, had prevented CCRB from releasing almost any record about an individual member of services disciplinary history at all. And that's now gone. And so the CCRB has been on the micro level communicating with civilians and members of service alike what we find and then why we found it. And then with regard to the public at large, we are putting our, as much of our paperwork as we can online so that it is available for the public to see. And we are putting our data, so not just the stats in the aggregate about how many complaints we review and the number of substantiated complaints and the number of substantiated allegations within those complaints. And also the number of exoneration, oh, sorry, within guidelines, allegations and the number of unfounded allegations. We make all of that public, but we also do it for as, as granular as the individual case.
And so it sounds like you're, you're satisfied with the extent to which you're able to share information with the public. I don't want, yeah, okay. Thank you. Yeah.
Okay, I have a technical question. The 2019 charter revision recommended .65 to be effective in 2021 of the personnel cost of the personnel, sorry, not personnel, of the personnel, of the uniform person in order, you know, in terms of your allocation. Question is, does that include overtime?
So it's just, it's, it does not because it's just saying that our headcount is linked to the NYPD's uniformed headcount.
Okay. And secondly, since it's just a headcount as opposed to an allocation to your point, if there's a collective bargaining agreement for both the staff members of CCRB or collective bargaining agreement, which often lags in arbitration or mediation with the PBA and other unions, does your allocation then gets reviewed retroactively to the point of that?
So my experience with the Office of Management and Budget is when there is a labor agreement, they will add money to your budget to account for the change due to the labor agreements. But again, that does not solve our problem of headcount because what'll then happen is we will have used money that was allocated to, to hire folks. And then when there are vacancies, it is more expensive to fill those vacancies. And so it, it doesn't, it doesn't, there's not a lot of wiggle room and not a lot of accruals to allow us to hire up to headcount when the original allocation was based on a number that was made before the labor agreement was signed.
Okay, thank you. I think in interest time, this is very interesting. If you can provide us those, that information on the data on those cases. This is a very important topic and we want to do that. I want to ask a technical question. Did we lose the fee on the Zoom for the other commissioners? Okay. All right. Yep. Thank you for your testimony, both of you. We appreciate it. Sure, we may have some other questions later, so. But thank you for your candor today. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next, we're going to call Michelle Bascomi from nonprofit Staten Island to testify. Just give us, give us a moment. If you don't mind just readjusting the camera a little bit too. Good? Okay. All right, you, you may begin.
Sure. Thank you. Good evening and thanks for coming to Staten Island and the opportunity tonight. My name is Michelle Bascom. I'm speaking on behalf of nonprofit Staten Island. We're a supportive hub for the borough's nonprofit sector. We're also a proud partner of the New York City Civic Engagement Commission and have worked with them to bring participatory budgeting and civic engagement opportunities to our community, particularly through the People's Money Initiative. The Civic Engagement Commission was created as a charter mandated entity with the purpose of advancing democratic engagement across New York City. Despite its mandate, it remains deeply underfunded, leaving programs like the People's Money vulnerable to year-to-year budget decisions and political whim rather than operating with stability necessary to deliver long-term impact. This instability undermines the very purpose of that commission. Participatory budgeting has demonstrated success in the city council, in public housing initiatives and in its citywide implementation. Yet without the guaranteed funding, its future remains uncertain. A true commitment to democratic engagement must be backed by stable, protected funding that allows the CEC to fulfill its charter mandate and to scale its work effectively. Staten Island has had no city council-led PB process in recent years, making the People's Money one of the very few ways that our residents can directly influence public funding decisions. Even within that process, our borough receives only one project per cycle. And yet that is one of the more proportionate per capita allocations that we see from any city agency. We do not fault our partners at the CEC for having just one project a cycle. Instead, we believe this is reflective of a broader issue. When the full city government lacks a consistent structural accountability, the borough level disparities persist. The underfunding of the CEC in many ways mirrors underfunding that we experience in Staten Island, where missing and incomplete city data often leads to inequitable resource allocation. Without mechanisms chartered to ensure transparency in how our city is tracking need and allocating its funding, boroughs, particularly like ours, remain at a disadvantage. This lack of accountability is also evident in how the city contracts with its nonprofits more broadly. Across all five boroughs, nonprofits carry out the work of city government, frankly, providing human services, delivering health services, elevating educational outcomes and responding to community-level crises. Yet they are routinely subjected to late contract registrations and delayed payments, forcing our nonprofits to operate without the funds that they are owed. A government that relies so heavily on nonprofits to execute public services cannot at the same time neglect to pay those organizations on time. Our partners at the CEC are an example of one of the more reliable agencies in executing agreements and remitting payments, something that we call for all city agencies to be more accountable for. Nonprofits deserve a citywide contracting system that is fair, transparent and functional. We're urging this commission to recommend, one, a guaranteed minimum allocation of .1% of the city budget for the People's Money, subject to review every three years to ensure the Civic Engagement Commission has the resources to fulfill its charter mandate. Two, stronger transparency requirements for borough-level funding allocations, ensuring equitable investment across all five boroughs of New York City. And three, clearer accountability measures for timely and fair nonprofit contracting and procurement processes so that the organizations delivering on public services are not financially destabilized by government politics and inefficiencies. Strengthening local democracy requires both structural investment in the engagement opportunities as well as systemic reforms that continue to ensure the government is operating with fairness and accountability. We look forward to seeing the meaningful recommendations that emerge from this process and we thank you again for your time tonight.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there any questions? Yes.
Thank you very much for coming out tonight and for your testimony. Classification on the minimum budget, is it for the CEC as a whole or just for this specific program, the People's Money?
For the specific program at this time is what the request is. .1% of the budget, my understanding is at present, it would be somewhere around $112 million. And the reason we advocate for the initiative rather than the commission writ large is that those are dollars expensed to the community directly. And we, we want that money to be hitting at the ground level. And we see that as an avenue for democratic and civic engagement where communities can really get involved in how public funding is made. So we'd, we'd prefer to see the dollars going directly back to the public.
And this would be for basically ideally participatory budgeting in all 51 council districts?
That's correct. That's correct. The current process, the People's Money Initiative, for clarification or if we're not familiar, administered by the Civic Engagement Commission is a yes. Citywide participatory budgeting initiative, separate and apart from the city council. Currently, any New Yorker age 11 and up is eligible to participate. And that goes from idea generation phase all the way through the phase of voting on their local ballot.
And last question, sorry. Want to talk a little bit about this issue about timely payments to nonprofits? You said that the CEC does a very good job of paying on time. Just curious to know, what are they doing differently in all the city agencies?
I'm remiss to admit that I believe they're using a third party. They are, it's a bit of a, yeah, it's a third party. I believe it's the Citizens Commission of New York City that administrates their payments. So they have a third-party vendor who they offhand the payment processing to. And we find it to be tremendously efficient.
So they're not going through the mayor's office of contract services?
That's correct.
Did you say the Citizens Budget Commission or the Citizens Commission?
Citizens Commission.
Okay.
Citizens Commission of New York, for New York City.
All right. So we have a question by Commissioner Yu online.
Hi, thank you for your testimony. I, having run a nonprofit and timely payments is an issue for every nonprofit. So I thank you for your testimony. I think it's so relevant. And even now, I know people, I know nonprofits that are struggling, especially with the budget cuts, having to make ends meet, literally paying their staff when contracts are delayed by sometimes a year. And a lot of the smaller nonprofits are not able to get a line of credit. when contracts are delayed by sometimes a year and a lot of the smaller nonprofits are not able to get a line of credit or some kind of a loan. And so I appreciate that. My question was just a, a quick one. The percentage that you propose, 0.01%, how, what's the division of that? Or I just wanted to get an idea of where your number comes from and how, how do you propose the division of that?
Yeah, zero, so 0.1% is what the request is for the People's Money, 0.1%. Sorry if I was misspoken on that. And that was actually through collaborative discussion with the Civic Engagement Commission themselves for transparency. Our partners at the Civic Engagement Commission have engaged a number of their sustained partners, if you will, of which we are one, in some thought partnership and asked if, if we would be behind them in requesting a direct allocation for the sustainment of participatory budgeting. It is their belief that that is sufficient on three-year rolling basis. So the, the request is that that 0.1% allocation be reviewed periodically, three years being the current recommendation by the CEC themselves.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any, yeah, Commissioner?
Thank you so much for the testimony. My, my question is, so can you help us to understand the expectation of who and how the communities participate? Is that yet a function of dependence on nonprofits to do the engagement work? Can you draw the bridge for that?
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's a really fun process. The Civic Engagement Commission engages community-based organizations and ground-level partners throughout the whole process. And so it is in phases. Phase one, they refer to as the idea generation phase. And this is where credible messengers and CBOs and FBOs are contracted funded partners of the CEC in bringing out residents, our constituencies, you know, just the, the diversity of the communities, to come up with what they think would be a good use of city dollars. Phase two is that those ideas are then aggregated, put together, and there's a borough assembly commission that is convened in each borough. The Borough Assembly Commission, I believe, is about 20 people, although maybe don't quote me, but I believe it's approximately 20 people from each borough that, that then convene. They hash out all those ideas that had come in. They drill down to X amount that they feel are appropriate to put on a public ballot. The final docket is then made public and CBOs, FBOs are again re-engaged to get, get out the vote. Although my understanding is that the language of vote isn't landing so well in certain communities, but that is what it, it is a vote. And the ballot for each borough, it, it'll be live on May 14th. Y'all should check it out and vote for your own borough. Other boroughs, for what it's worth, typically two to four projects funded per borough. I believe that Brooklyn might see the largest and Staten Island has one allocation.
And just one last part of that question. So from the nonprofit's standpoint.
Yeah, could you, could you close it on my?
So, so from the nonprofit's standpoint, there's some minor funding for that three-phase process? Can you, is it, are you of the opinion that the nonprofits then yet have to co-sponsor that work?
Can you clarify? Co-sponsor? Oh, we have, I mean, put, put their credibility behind it?
Not just credibility, is, 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 does the commission pay the actual cost of those three phases of the nonprofit engagement? Where does the nonprofit come to the table to pay that share?
The allocation is fairly fair as far as procurements go. And, and I will say that the contracts are extended on a per-cycle basis. So for the idea generation phase, there's a very clear set. They also tier their contracting opportunities. So for the idea generation, they say you can host, if you engage 100 of your constituents, there's a particular payment rate for that, that you're contracted, if you engage 200, et cetera. And the same goes for the vote phase. If you collect 350 votes, you get $2,000. If you collect 500, you get three, you know, $4,000 and it's tiered. I will say that it is more, it is certainly more cost-effective for mid- and large-size nonprofits to participate in that way because they have staff to leverage and constituencies to leverage. I would say that for grassroots organizations, a number do aim to get involved. It's nice to get two grand in the bank. If you're a volunteer-led nonprofit, you're always looking for two grand, right? And yet it's, it, I would say in those cases, the staff capacity probably does not meet, you know, the dollar, the dollars don't make sense at, at that point. But folks still go for it and it, it seems to be meaningful for the partners who have sustained engagement over the three-year, the three years it's been implemented so far.
Good evening. Thank you for your testimony. I want to sort of flesh out the, the conversation we're having here. And I'm, I'm probably going to put it in, in nonprofit terms, and I feel like I've earned that since I've spent most of my life running nonprofits. If you, could you kind of speak in before and after terms or more specifically in like what, in nonprofit terms, what the deliverables would be? That is, if, if the city makes this kind of investment year after year, if in, in explicit and specific terms is possible, what are we going to see? What's going to be the evidence of that investment? What in explicit terms are, is again, is the city going to get for that investment?
In Staten Island, what they get from it are the projects yielded that are demanded by the community themselves. So in Staten Island, we've, in, in the previous cycles, voted on a Job Links program specifically for hard-to-reach populations and immigrant populations. And so what happens when the, after that public vote phase, right, a, a project or three, depending on your borough, is determined, that is then, that project is then fully funded and allocated to a local nonprofit to execute. And so what the city gets is essentially whatever gap in services that community has identified. In other boroughs, I think we've seen this as nutrition and, and investments in urban gardens, is my understanding. We had that in one borough. We've seen this in childhood reading programs, literacy programs in other boroughs as well. Yeah, I mean, it, it is essentially the opportunity for community members to identify where not enough money is going and then to have a local provider deliver on that. Because we can say in the Job Links program, for example, we know that Staten Island is tremendously underfunded in immigrant services. Happy to submit written testimony in, in the next 72 hours to demonstrate that, but separate issue. For immigrant services, we know that we're underfunded. We know that our providers are not receiving an allocation that is adequate to the need. So when the community goes behind that vote and says, put another $175,000 in that pot, that's what the city gets. Now it doesn't have to come from Moya. Now we don't have to go beg our council member to do more discretionary, right? This is a predetermined allocation that's responsive to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for your testimony. So question, because I hadn't realized that it was nonprofits that are part of the engagement process and then potentially nonprofits that are administering the, the awards. Is it the case that you could have the same nonprofit essentially engaging and promoting a particular program that then that same nonprofit would get an award for and run? Do you get what I'm, do you understand the question?
I, I think I understand your question. It's a possibility. It's not baked into the process in that way. The procurement for the project is a separate bid process, a separate RFP process. So the Civic Engagement Commission is engaging, you know, whichever CBOs, whichever FBOs in the idea generation in getting out the vote. And so sure, could an immigrant service organization be like getting out the vote for their project? They absolutely could. If that project were to be successful, it becomes an open, an open RFP. And so that organization would then still have to make the case, score against the rubric and receive the allocation like any other procurement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, we thank you for your testimony.
And thank you for your time.
Thank you. And next, we're calling Justin Wood from New York Lawyers for the Public Interest.
Hello and good evening. Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to testify before the Commission tonight. My name is Justin Wood. I'm the Director of Policy at New York Lawyers for the Public Interest. Founded in 1976, we are a civil rights community legal organization with programs in disability justice, environmental justice, health justice, and a pro bono clearinghouse that matches resources of the private bar to grassroots community nonprofit organizations to provide free legal resources and representation. I wanted to start by echoing Michelle's concerns just on behalf of the entire nonprofit sector of New York City on issues of late payments and late contract registrations, but because that was covered, I'll, I'll jump ahead. We also just wanted to highlight for the Commission and, and ask you to consider the broad area of whether the city's fair share requirements from the 1989 Charter revision are truly being adhered to substantively and whether updates to these important reforms are needed. The goal of these requirements from a past Charter Review Commission was to ensure a more fair distribution of both the benefits of city resources and a fair distribution of the burdens of environmentally polluting city functions across New York City's communities. In the decades since, multiple reports by the city council in 2017, by the city comptroller in 2019, and again by the city comptroller recently in 2023, showed large disparities in access to environmental goods, services like parks, and in environmental harms, exposures to environmental hazards like waste transfer stations, highways, extreme heat, et cetera. NLP and our community partners have worked hard on legislation in partnership with the city council, going back to address some of these disparities citywide. And we continually experience frustration with the slow pace of agency implementation of these local laws intended to address these disparities. So we'd encourage the Commission to explore means of holding agencies and the mayor accountable for failure to implement fair share and the spirit of fair share and local legislation. We work on, with partners on several long-term environmental justice, accessibility, and mental health access campaigns where failure to implement this type of legislation intended to address equitable distribution of resources and burdens is a major and ongoing barrier to progress. I could name a few examples. We've worked on waste equity for decades with New York City Environmental Justice Alliance and their members. This is always in, in these reports I mentioned cited as one of the least equitable distributions of harmful facilities in New York City. And despite local legislation we've passed and been pushing for implementation of recent data and the comptroller's recent report show that still almost 75% of privately managed waste permitted capacity continues to be in just a handful of environmental justice communities. Secondly, the transportation sector is an area where we have been fighting for accessible and equitable distribution of transportation resources. We would encourage the Commission to consider ways in which fair share might be updated to address this sector. Obviously, this is the lifeblood of New York City's economy, access to jobs, access to healthcare, access to civic life, and is also the second-largest source of greenhouse gas emissions in our economy. And so while not every state agency like the MTA or NICA or Health and Hospitals is subject to fair share facility facilities, we urge the city to take a sort of inter-agency and all-of-government approach to living up to the spirit of the fair share laws. And a lot of that could apply to the transportation sector or even something like reducing the disproportionate harms of the electric generation sector, where we have been working with community partners on replacing the dirtiest and most outdated peaker plants with local renewable energy resources and energy storage. And again, this is an area where the city could take a lot more concerted action and have a lot more transparency toward how everything that is within the city's control is being directed to reducing the harms of something like a power plant siting. And finally, we would encourage the Commission to apply a similar analysis to something like mental health and healthcare resources that are also city facilities and within the city's control. Thank you for the opportunity to present testimony tonight.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions? Go ahead. Commissioner Lovis.
Thank you, and thank you for your testimony, Mr. Wood. On the transportation side, you know, you mentioned that the MTA is outside the control of the city of New York. So just wondering, are there recommendations or specific areas we should be looking at in terms of ferries, you know, bike lanes, bus lanes, taxi service? Just trying to get a more specific idea of what you're looking at.
Yeah.
What you think you should look at.
No, thank you for the question. I think the short answer is, is all of the above. And also, you know, a more recent development, and, and we're sitting right now in an entire borough that doesn't have a city bike station. So when we look at the map of city bike stations or all of the contracted transportation services that have both benefits and potential harms, something like school bus depots that the city contracts with, the maps just look all too familiar. The, the school bus depot map looks a lot like the waste transfer station map or the power plant map in many cases. So on transportation, you know, we hope that city government can really, again, inter-agency, look at all of the things that are within the city's control. Bus lanes, for example, remain highly concentrated in Manhattan, where obviously there's a lot of density. But, you know, especially as we're encouraging New Yorkers in outer boroughs like Staten Island to utilize public transit more, we need to build out bus lane infrastructure at a more, much more rapid pace and ensure that it's fully accessible. There are also areas of licensing and permitting where the city has enormous control. The Taxi and Limousine Commission can set standards for the types of four-hire vehicles and cabs that are allowed. I mean, currently, we're really concerned about a needed push for electrification in that sector. And this is probably the biggest market for Uber and Lyft for hire vehicles in the world. And yet none of those electric vehicles that have been adopted by the industry are fully wheelchair accessible. So these are areas where we want to see the full power of New York City government brought to bear and that sort of market-creating power brought to bear to debut the, the world's, actually, it wouldn't be the world's. The United States first mass-marketed, fully accessible electric vehicle and create a lot of good jobs in the process.
Anyone else? Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have some announcements to make. I want to remind everyone that the next hearing is scheduled for Monday, March 24th at Lehman College. All hearings are from 5:00 to 7:00 PM and folks are invited to testify either in person or via Zoom. Registration and further details on all hearings are on our website at www.thecommission.nyc. I'll repeat that, www.thecommission.nyc. Following the Bronx hearings, the Commission will draft and release a preliminary report to inform our future hearings. And at this point, I believe that we, we are going to be adjourned. Are there any questions from any of the Commissions before we adjourn tonight? Okay, here we go. Then can we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Can we get a second? All right. Let's take a vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes, any oppose, any abstention, the as have in order. We are adjourned. Thank you very much for everybody who testified online and in person, and thank you for the Commissions for coming.